All right, it's seven o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. I will let Dr. Burnham begin.
As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashenbow.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Mrs. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
And Ms. Sophie Shapiro is not joining us this evening, nor do I see our student representative. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
And Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Now I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ashenbow.
Alrighty, in accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, as posted on the town's, not live, as posted by the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating, actually all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Any member of the committee that wishes to provide comment, questions, or motions may do so. Please wait till your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And for items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford the public to comment. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And then each public commenter will be afforded three minutes to a total of 10 minutes for each of those sessions. I will review those rules before we start public comment. So continuing on would be the chair's report. What I'd like to do for the chair's report this evening is I'd like to read the notice of vacancy or the vacant spot on the school committee. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 3-1, 7-10, and any other relevant provisions of the town charter of the following vacancy, school committee member. The term of appointment is immediate and until the annual town election in May of 2022. The duties of the school committee are defined in Section 3-3 of the Town Charter and include B, powers and duties. The school committee shall have all the powers which are conferred on school committees by general laws and such additional powers and duties as may be provided by the charter, bylaw, or otherwise inconsistent with said grant of powers conferred by general laws. The powers and duties of the school committee shall include the following. One, to elect the superintendent of schools who shall be charged with the day-to-day administration of the school system, subject only to policy guidelines and directives adopted by the school committee. Two, to make all reasonable rules and regulations for the management of the public school system and for conducting the business of the school committee as the committee deems necessary or desirable. And, three, to adopt and administer an annual operating budget for the school department subject to appropriation by the town meeting. The school committee shall have general charge and superintendence of all buildings and grounds and shall furnish all school buildings with proper fixtures, furniture, and equipment. The school committee shall provide ordinary maintenance of all school buildings and grounds, provided however that the town meeting may, by bylaw, provide for the establishment of a central municipal maintenance department, which may include maintenance of school buildings and grounds. Whenever a school committee shall determine that additional classrooms are necessary to meet the educational needs of the community, at least one member of the school committee or a designee of the school committee shall serve on the agency, board, or committee to which the planning or construction of such new, remodeled, or renovated school building is delegated. The select board and school committee will accept talent bank forms or letters of interest from interested parties until filled. Interested parties should submit an application to 1025 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462, or to L Peterson@LunenburgOnline.com, which is in the superintendent's office, or to E Peterson@LunenburgOnline.com, the select board office. The vacancy will be filled by a joint vote of the select board and the school committee posted Tuesday, the November 9th, 2021. The meeting is tentatively scheduled, the joint meeting is tentatively scheduled for December 14th. That has not been confirmed yet. So that was the first piece of business. The second piece of business in my chair's report is I want to thank Mrs. Fran McCloskey for her many, many years of service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. I know that she was an integral part of the Turkey Hill Middle School for a very long time. And now she is a very important part of Mrs. Hanscom's Special Service Office. And we wish her the very, very best in retirement. And that would be my chair's report. We do not have a presentation this evening. And public comment is next on the agenda. For public comment, I want to remind the public that the first public comment section is for agenda items only. The second public comments, comment section is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. Each public comment section is 10 minutes in length, three minutes per person. So is, are there any public comments this evening? If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand using the raise your hand function. I am not seeing any. Are there any public comments on the committee? Then we will move forward. We have no minutes to approve this evening, but we do have a line item transfer. Mr. Cassidy?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. In front of the school committee tonight is a transfer from a number of line items. It's not one single, just for the public, it's not one single transfer. And the total amount that is being transferred within the budget is 142,005.74. Fifty cents. So this is the second part of the, the transfer that I had indicated to the school committee that I was going to be presenting. The first one was shifting funds from the salary reserve to all the negotiated amounts into the proper line items. And this is just some annual adjustments that, you know, once, when we submitted the budget in March and approved in April and May, there's just, has been some changes along the way and we're just making the adjustments. So it is a little bit higher than it has been. So without further ado, I'll just, if, if it's the will of committee, I'll just give a brief summary of, of some of these transfers. So I mean, classified ads. We have been doing, or we did do additional advertising and recruiting this year just because of the, the challenges that we had filling some positions. And that, that, that line item may end up going up a little bit higher as critical positions become available. Dues and meetings. We're enrolling more into certain groups. So that's why it was an unfunded amount and we're increasing that line item. Contracted services. That is an auditing line item that includes two audits during the year. A general supply account. That is that, that account may just be in the negative during the year as we move forward if, if we have to. It's really my placeholder for PP, PPE supplies during the year. And the amount that we're transferring right now is for the, I think I referred to a mask purchase and some signs. It's a, I felt is a couple of meetings ago. So that's where we put the money. You know, once again, that might be, it's in, it's, it's in one spot. So if, if we can transfer it maybe to a grant, it'll just be in one area. So that, that's what that line item is. The next is mileage reimbursement. That's for facilities in grounds. Directors, his, his reimbursement. Testing materials. We had an increase in class and after doing an inventory this year, we decided to order some extra materials. So that's why there was an increase there. Sped private tuition out of district. It was just a small adjustment to purchase order in a service for a student, out of district student for $300. The next two line items of, of $7,406 each is the, that's a new furniture line item in the middle school, in the new furniture line item at the high school. And those were additional desks in chairs that we had ordered just for the proper social distancing in the building. Once again, that might be, that might be a reimbursable cost at some point if, if, if we get some additional money. The next, the next line item is our contracted services. And that is our that, that, that line item is, is over because we have contracted with Suzan Enterprises to handle our IT director work. So that, that group will be with us. And then the, the next group, general supplies, repair and maintenance, computer repair and maintenance, contracted services and equipment are all from the IT department. And we're just really looking very closely at those budgets and it was just properly funding those budgets this year. And some of those costs are related to the annual lease of copiers. We're incorporating, excuse me, we're encumbering all of the money at the beginning of the year instead of piecemealing POs throughout the year. We, you know, this might be an issue, ordinarily this may have been an issue at the end of the year, but we're just encumbering all the money now just to make it easier to pay the bills and faster to pay the bills, quite frankly. The, the computer maintenance repair account. Oh, we have a lot more student computers out in, in the classrooms yeah, with student use. So we're, that's driving up that line item a bit. The next one, contracted services. Once again, we're, we've encumbered money for Comcast to the entire anticipated amount for Comcast this year at the beginning of the year instead of just piecemealing POs. And then in addition, it's, we're carrying eight hotspots district wide for students and administrators this year. And then the, the final, the equipment maintenance and lease, that's for copiers and copying overages that we're anticipating over the year. And the next, the final two is for athletic insurance. And we're able to get expanded coverage for students that we, we thought was valuable. You know, just for student safety. And then there was an $800 purchase under, under the supplies. You know, that could have gone under the revolving account. We're applying it to, to the local. So where's all this money coming from? So with, some money is coming from the, the line item, staff salaries under the IT department with the surplus funds from the resignation of the IT director to cover the, the cost for the, the athletic transfer as we're taking the money out of our transportation line item. And if, if we go over that, which we, the, the balance, which we will likely go over, will use revolving funds. The next one is contracted services. That's a facility and grounds account for 1125. That's going to cover the the mileage reimbursement. Our collaborative tuition is in pretty good shape. That, that will be able to handle the, our special ed expenditures. We have a a surplus in our regular transportation budget. They're, they're not transporting the, the 11th bus. We're running on 10 buses this year. And so I took some money out of that, that surplus, that potential surplus to cover us until at least mid-year. And, you know, if, if, if the ridership increases, we still have money in that account to provide that. And then finally, there's 51,000, approximately 51,000 and potential savings in the health insurance line item. And we had anticipated more employees taking insurance. But it, so that, that looks like there's going to be a surplus there too. So that is a, a lot of information. I tried to present it as clear as possible and as big as possible in the document that I shared with the school committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these transfers. The, the idea is to clean up the, these accounts for the quarterly report that will be provided to the school committee in, in December. And I anticipate that there will be some small building transfers at that time. Meaning a, if a school is in, say, one of the schools is in the different deficit in an account, they'll be shifting some money within the school-based budget. So that, that, that will, that will be presented before the, the quarterly report. So I'll turn it back to the chair. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Oh, okay. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? I do appreciate your detail on all of this because when I did see that really big number, I thought, hmm, I wonder what that's all about. And you told us and I appreciate that. So thank you very much. So do we need a motion? Yeah, we do. A motion to approve this. Mr. Leighton?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer of 142,574.50 as presented.
And a second?
This is Laura Kelly and I will second that motion.
All right, in a roll call.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbow?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll get your signatures at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'll update you on the presentation we had given previously on extended day changes, proposed changes. Mr. Cassidy, Mrs. McCarthy Gillette, and I hosted a Zoom forum for parents of our current K to four students. The thinking there is that the current fifth grade students next year would not be eligible for the program. They would be aging out. There were program staff and one parent in attendance. We presented the proposed changes, explained the reasons for the proposal and addressed any questions or concerns that were raised by those in attendance. We do have some good news. We are the recipient of a new grant through the Department of Ed, the Summer Reimbursement Grant. The award is in the amount of $11,640. This is a a grant that will allow us reimbursement for the cost of the 2021 summer program funded through the local budget. So you might remember that we received the after-school and out-of-school time grant that partially funded our summer program. This grant is actually now going to reimburse the district for money spent out of the local budget for summer programming. We have the COVID update. Last week we had six cases. We have six cases so far this week. The positivity rate for the town is 2.75%, which is great news. It's, it's headed down. And the state positivity rate unfortunately is headed upward. I believe today I saw it posted at 2.8%. So we're, we're now catching up with the overall state average. So that's good news for Lunenburg. Our test and stay program has now tested 41 different students since we began. The vaccination rate, the middle school is 44%. That's up 2% from our last report. The high school is at 16.9%, up 2% from our last report. And we know that there are a handful of students in grades K through five who have received one dose of the vaccine. None have been fully vaccinated at this time. And we have a few reminders. November 24th is an early release day and schools will be closed on November 25th and 26th for the Thanksgiving holiday. December 1st is a school committee meeting at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. That will be in a hybrid format. December 2nd is the annual tree lighting. And I also want to let everyone know that once again this year, the Lunenburg Public Schools Secretaries will be running their annual holiday gift card drive and some additional information will be coming out soon. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully folks are able to spend some time with family and friends safely this year. And I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ashenbow.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. Does anybody have any questions regarding the superintendent's report? I was just wondering, I, I know that there, there was only the one parent that attended the Zoom meeting about extended day. Did you get any other inquiries besides that?
No, we, we did send out the following day, the slides that were presented. And we've been monitoring LPS online to see if any, any feedback has come in that way. It has not. We've also been checking in with Mrs. McCarthy Gillette and you know, she reports that as she greets parents at the door at the end of the day, many have indicated that they understand the need for the increase. So that's, that's the only additional information that we've had so far. We'll bring this back at the next meeting for you to vote on and we'll continue to monitor to see if we have any additional comments or feedback coming in to LPS online. Folks are also welcome to email me directly if they have any questions or concerns.
Thank you very much. And we wish you a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Thank you.
So we have no student representative at this point. So we'll move on to new business declaration of surplus.
So we received this request from our Health and Safety Officer, Katie McGuire. Mass DPH has put out screening guidance. Vision testing machines are discontinued. Mass DPH is no longer recommending for any age group the use of vision testing machines. And vision testing machines do not have reliable evidence basis. Additionally, a child's behavior that may indicate a vision problem such as squinting is hidden from the screener when this method is used. Our district has four Titmus 2A machines. The estimated age is greater than 20 years and this machine is no longer being manufactured. We're seeking to have these machines declared surplus. Our Health and Safety Officer has reached out to the Lions Club to see if they would be interested in taking these machines once they're declared surplus. However, at this time, we don't have any indication that they would be wanting these machines.
All right. So does anyone have any questions about the vision machines? Then do we have a motion to declare these as surplus? Ms. Kelly?
I would like to make a motion to declare these machines as surplus.
Mr. Leighton?
I'll second the motion.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashenbow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is school committee representative for secretary negotiations.
We did receive a letter from our secretaries, the Lunenburg Secretaries and Clerks Association requesting to commence negotiations for their successor agreement which expires in June this year. What we need is to have a school committee representative involved in these negotiations.
So I see that it looks like the timing during the day is going to be like 4:15 is what it looks like on the letter. So just so people know, because availability at that time of day would be important. So is there anyone that would like to be the representative for the secretaries or is able to? Mr. Leighton?
So Carol, yeah, I would say that I am available, but if, if other people are entrusted, that is, that is fine too. To share in the responsibility. To share in the responsibility.
I I think you have a fair amount you're juggling.
Okay, yeah, Thursdays are just very difficult for me at that time.
Sure. Um, I can do it. I there's no reason why I can't do it. So um if it's difficult for the two of you and um I can check in with Sophie, but I would, I can do that. That's not a problem. Okay.
Thank you, Carol.
Oh, that's all right.
We need a motion or no?
Yes, I guess.
Yeah, I'll throw I'll throw a motion to have Carol Arshinbo be the representative for negotiations with the secretaries.
I will second that motion.
Alrighty.
All right, uh, Mr. Layton.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
This is Arshinbo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is School Committee Goals, and this is something that we didn't do last year with all the confusion of COVID. We we never got to this. Um, I know I had looked at a few things, but I didn't know if anybody else had any ideas about what they would like to see as goals. Mr. Layton.
Yeah, I'll throw out some ideas. Um, one idea I had was um, I know the M A S C does workshops. Um, not only just like full committee workshops, but individual workshops where one of us could say go and look into a a topic of interest. I thought that might be a goal that we would look at, look for those and and potentially go to these workshops and come back and share that knowledge with the the rest of the committee.
Sure. Um, and some of them are quite good. I've done a couple of them and and they're usually very interesting.
Yeah, I did one with the Estor funding and I thought that was very informative. Uh, the second idea I had was I was just looking at the uh, the protocols. Um, that's one, one where I saw the workshops. I'm trying to think what my second idea was now. Sorry, I'm going blank a little bit. I'm gonna.
That's okay. Long day.
Oh, sorry, it was expanding on the, I was looking at the protocols, but it was expanding on prior goals. So I was looking at the prior goals that we had and one was just kind of informing the public uh about what we do. And I thought we could continue that. I thought um besides just posting agendas and and minutes, I think we could try to expand further, but again, keep it factual. This is what we do. Um, these are some of the things that are going on. Um, whether it's on social media, maybe the newspaper, local newspaper. But again, just continuing getting this out there so people are aware what's going on, what we do and our roles and responsibilities too.
I had that one down as well. So um, Ms. Kelly, did you have any ideas?
That was the exact same that I was going to comment on is um just that number one goal we have on our side, increasing the community awareness of our role. I think that's very important and I think there is room to expand on that. Um, I know social media is certainly the way people see um information these days, so perhaps we could put out some accurate information on social media about what our roles are.
No, I think even we we've kind of incorporated a little bit, or even the superintendent has incorporated it with the principals too, but in the principals uh notifications, there's been more school committee information going out too. So I think even exploring that avenue too, that we can work through the superintendent to get information out to to the principals.
And previously, um, as our last goal, we had said we would write like small articles to go in the ledger to explain. And I don't think anybody ever did that. The rest of that goal, we had done a survey and all that. We had done that. But um, and the other was one that Dr. Burnham suggested would be to tape a um do a tape for the public access people so that they could play it on the television. So that um more people would become aware of things as well. So I think I think we definitely have a goal there. That's that's definitely one. Um, the other goal I was thinking of had to do with the equity, where the district is looking at equity. I thought if we could find a way to do that, to look at equity as well. Um, so I did what any good teacher does. I looked around at other school districts to see what they were doing. And um I am borrowing heavily from um the Sudbury School Committee. But they had as a goal um that they would review district policies having to do with equity. That they would have an equity audit that Dr. Burnham tells me she knows what that is. I didn't. So Dr. Burnham, can you tell us what that is?
Well, there are different ways to approach that. We did a little bit of an equity audit last year with the Equity Advisory Council, taking a look at the eleven dimensions of equity. But we could also um seek out a consultant in the area of equity and ask them to come in and conduct an audit as well. If that was something that you wanted to to explore. Um, we can look into that and uh and I can get back to you with uh consultants that that do that for districts as well as a cost connected with it.
Right. Right. The the other thought I had too was to um to invite um Dorothy Presser in to do a workshop on this topic because she did indicate to me that she does do that. So those those were my thoughts dealing with equity. So um, what do we think? I I think Brian, your your workshop idea is a good idea as well because I think there is a lot to be learned from those workshops. So do do we want to think about it? Give Sophie a chance to see what these ideas are as well and come back to this next week?
I think that's a good idea.
All right, why don't we do that? Then we will um we'll table this for now. Give us some time to think a little bit more on it. Mr. Layton, and do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I didn't know if you wanted to draft something or have someone draft something up first and have that ready for next meeting. So we can explore that. I I feel like we're kind of all on the same page. I'd like so.
Yeah, we could do that. So who um who would like to do some drafting? I can draft out the equity goal because I have that in my head. Mr. Layton, did you wanna?
I was gonna say I could work on the the workshop goal. And then I don't know if Laura, would you be interested in doing some of the social media? You could steal from the language that we already had?
Yep.
We'll bring those three back.
Sounds good.
That's a plan then.
Once you have drafts, if you if you can get them to me even the morning of our next meeting, I can drop them into the the meeting folder for you so everyone has a copy.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, we can do that. Excellent. Well, I feel like we're a little bit more on the ball on that than we were last time. So that's a good thing. All right then. Um, donations.
So this evening I have two donations. Um, one is in the amount of two hundred thirty-four dollars from Box Tops for Education. That would be deposited into the gift account for Turkey Hill Elementary School. And another in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Lunenburg PTO that will also be deposited in the Turkey Hill gift account. And I would recommend that we accept these donations.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to accept these donations, Mr. Layton?
I'll make a motion to accept the donations as outlined with gratitude.
I will second that motion.
All right.
Mr. Layton.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshinbo?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. And thanks to the people donating. We greatly appreciate that. Uh, next to the water testing results, we are going to pass over that as the results are not available.
They're not complete yet. We're still waiting on on some reports. We had hoped that we would have it, but not yet. So as soon as we have them, we'll bring it back.
All right. Thank you. Now back to old business, um, the town bylaws. So I did, um, just to bring people up to speed who may be listening. Uh, the town bylaw committee had requested that we look at the town bylaws as they refer to the schools. When I looked at the town bylaws as they referred to the schools, all I got were the traffic situation. Actually, and I did find a revolving account as well. But the revolving account was for um custodians that um um, so that when people rent out the building is what I understood it to be. There's a revolving account that fees go into. Is that correct, Dr. Burnham?
I'd have to.
Look at that again.
I I might have to. Mr. Cassidy, do you know anything about that?
Can you repeat that again, Mrs. Arshinbo?
I should have it in front of me, but of course I don't. And by the time I find it, we'll all be asleep. So um, I'm not, I'm not gonna look. Maybe we'll have to put this off till next time. But it it talked about a school revolving account that had to do with custodial fees.
Right, cuz. So there there is a um it, you know, we'll call it a a facility account that that's really tied to the uh TCP. It's managed by the by the town. Uh, so any uh user fees that that uh that are generated from users of TCP would pay uh like overtime um, for to to support those programs if a custodian is needed. And uh any fees would go toward the repair of the building as well. Now, to my, I I don't have the number in front of me. Uh, the 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 amount of revenues that I'm just kind of talking off the top of my head. The the amount of revenues that are generated out of that account is 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 in the thousands. It's not the hundred thousands. So it's it's not gonna repair the the roof or, you know, improve the electrical system. So i- i- it really, it may uh be used for small repairs. Mr. Londa used to uh manage it. Um, and some of the, some of the funds were used to maintain the grounds too. So such as, you know, um hiring a landscape company. Probably gave you too much information, but uh that that's there there is the account and that's those are the uses um that it's used for and it's managed by the town.
So that makes me think that I probably need to go back to that because if it's under a school, that's not a school anymore and that probably needs to be fixed in this bylaw review. What do we think?
Is it possible, Mr. Cassidy, that this is related to our facilities revolving account, which also pays overtime for custodial services?
So what I'm gonna do is try and find it.
Yeah.
While while I try and find that, let me just see if I can do two things at once. I don't know if I'm good at that, but I'm gonna try. And that would be um um, the oh, I'm pretty sure I'm not good enough. Oh, maybe. Um, that the traffic things, I talked to the chief because it was all about the school zones. And um it it only showed up on Oak Ave and Northfield. It didn't show up on Mass Ave. And I expressed that we had talked about it and thought, this is odd. And we either have to put Mass Ave in or we need to take Oak Ave out because it it wasn't consistent. Well, that wasn't the deal at all. First, um, the chief very nicely told me that that was his problem, not us. So that was good. Um, but he also said that the reason why nothing is stated about the other schools is that they are on Mass Ave and Mass Ave is a state highway. And because it is a state highway, they um have no jurisdiction over that. So it would not fall in the town bylaw that he had tried to put it to put um a school zone up at the primary building. There is no flashing lights there, I guess. I never noticed that, but that's what he said. And um, he said that was because the school itself is so many feet or whatever away from the road so that it doesn't qualify by the state for that school zone um, marking or whatever. So that explains what that is. That clearly is not up to us. So now I'm gonna see if in a million years, I think I can find this quickly. I just hit something and it brought me to something else. I'm not gonna find this quickly. We'll be here all night. So um my suggestion is that we table this vote. They don't need it immediately. They're not, they don't need it till after the first of the year anyways. So I would say, why don't we table this till I find that? And we can be sure that we know what we're talking about. Does that make sense to people?
It makes sense. It doesn't seem like there's much concern at this point, but it's always good to double check.
Yeah, I would rather not say, yes, let's do that and then find out that we shouldn't have. So okay, so we'll we'll table that and I will look into that better than I did the last time. All right, next is the discussion on transportation.
Good evening, Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. Um, just a few updates for this uh, the committee tonight and um so we're, you know, we're pretty close to releasing the survey to the parents. Um, but ju- just talking to the team, um you know, we thought it would be advantageous just to present it to the school committee for their perspective. If there was maybe another question or, you know, different eyes, uh, certainly, uh, you know, we will take any input from the committee. So the 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 survey was uh loaded up in the um um, the shared folder. So um I I I'll, you know, I'll I'll just go go through it really quickly for the public.
Sure.
Um, so it's really asking, uh, do you kind of, so this is targeted to families within a mi- uh, under a mile and a half. So this, this is not going to every single parent and I'll get uh, I'll get to those numbers in a second because we did some analysis on on the uh, on the groups that we're looking at here. So this isn't a district-wide survey. It's a really uh targeted survey uh to families, specific families. Um, so do you currently receive bus transportation? Uh, if so, do you get it in the morning, afternoon or morning and afternoon? Um, if the policy changes and makes students eligible for transportation, how likely would you uh, would would your child uh ride the bus? And there are four, there's there's four ranges there instead of just a yes or no. Um, we just, we figured we'd open it up uh and give them some possibilities there. And then we discuss an annual fee with the same sort of five measures uh, to see if we can catch uh any differences um in their decision. The next question is really identifying where their students are uh from kindergarten uh to K to twelve. And really for this survey, we're really, we're really interested in three to twelve. Uh, but we we did throw the the primary school grades in there as well. Um, cuz those families may be impacted if 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 some get transportation and some don't. So, you know, it's maybe that data is gonna identify those types of families. So I think that might be useful. And then, you know, uh, one thing we were considering was, you know, the impact of uh athletics. And then, you know, one thing we were considering was, you know, the impact of athletics on transportation. Probably not a, a very big impact on morning transportation, but it's the afternoon transportation that we'd be interested in. And it's a range, you know, they can check all three. You know, fall, winter and spring. And, you know, I know you've heard it from, from me and I know you've heard of him, the superintendent multiple times, which is, you know, we, we basically hold a spot for a student on a bus regardless of, you know, they, whether they're doing sports. So we're not, we're not looking to take away. You know, an opportunity for a kid to be, a student to be a rider on the way home. If, you know, if they're a soccer player in the fall and it rains, they can take the bus home. You know, so, you know, that's the idea here is just kind of identifying. Maybe some wiggle room. You know, not. You know, if there's 100% ridership every single day, then, you know, we're, we're gonna fill that bus. But i- is there any wiggle room if, if we know in the afternoons, you know, kids are participating in, in athletics and will, will that buffer some of the ridership? So that's, that's the transportation survey that we have going out to, to parents. Probably as soon as tomorrow. This thing was ready to go. Over the last couple of days, we made some slight modifications to it today. But I think it was, it was important to share. And to get any input from the school committee. So if you would. I guess. Maybe let me show you some of the other elements that we're talking about that I'd like to give the committee an update and maybe that information may trigger a question that we can throw in. So. Let me see if I can share. Can everyone see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. I, I'm just gonna keep for this presentation. Cause I, I'm just gonna keep on the summary sheet. Uh, this is where all the student data is down here. So that I'm not gonna be moving around. In fact, I'm gonna take my hands off the mouse. I don't. I don't slip. So. Let me give you the committee an update. So we've identified a hundred, right now, a hundred and eighty-eight students that are within a, a mile and a half of their school. And there's sixty-four, so sixty-four at Turkey Hill. Uh, sixty in the middle school and then sixty-four at the high school. So let me, let me just tell you what those numbers really are. So that's starting next school year. Not right now, next school year. So we looked at current second graders and we're not including current twelfth graders. You know, we've moved the second grade is up to Turkey Hill and the fifth grade is up to the middle school. And the eighth grade is up to high school. So we, we did, we did that shift of, of student data. Uh, those are the students that are gonna be impacted. Uh, we're looking at about a hundred and forty-two families. So a hundred and eighty-eight students coming from a hundred and forty-two families. So a hundred and forty-two surveys will be going out. Again, a hundred and forty-two parents are gonna get that survey to complete. Um, and that's what we're targeting. Until we really get the data, it's. You know, it, it's hard to say whether or not we're gonna need another bus or so. You know, obviously if some of these numbers go down, it's gonna fit perfectly into the, like, one single bus. Uh, and then we'll, you know, we've, we've thrown around a class for that, which is right around mid seventy thousand dollar mark. You know, there's, you know, there's thirteen twelfth graders next year at Lunenburg High School. That, that fall with, remember this is falls within the mile and a half. You know, will those kids participate or i- in ridership? Or will they have their own license and bring their own vehicles? You know, that, that's, that's hopefully some of the data is going to provide that. You know, once again, we, we've shifted the student population in these numbers. So the, 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 the numbers that you're seeing here, they're, they're two different years. So it's current enrollment and then FY twenty-three potential riders by expanding or expanding this policy and opening up to everybody. So that, that's, that's some of the raw data. You know, the, the survey. You know, I, I anticipate we're not gonna get a hundred percent participation. So. Hopefully we, we're, we're gonna send it out. We're gonna send a reminder out before Thanksgiving. So it's gonna go out probably tomorrow. Uh, we'll send out another reminder either Tuesday or Wednesday night and the survey will end the Sunday uh, after Thanksgiving. You know, I'm gonna speak freely now. If, if the participation i- in the survey is very low, we may expand it for another two days or so. Uh, we'll, we'll make a, we'll make a decision on that Monday and we'll, we'll provide an update to the school committee. Obviously, we want some, some, some raw data and then we'll make some assumptions based upon the, the, the parents that participated in the survey. But we know what the, the full impact could be if, if, if these a hundred and eighty-eight students, they all say, yeah, we want to, we want to be transported. So, so that's, that's some of the work that we've been doing. Was, you know, it was. I think at some point in my career, I, I did a, we, we had to redefine that mile and a half radius and we, you know, we did circles out from a single point at the schools. I mean, and we used Google Maps, which we did. I didn't have, the last time I did this, which made it really convenient. So. The, the detail, the information is pretty detailed. We're pretty confident that we've identified those, those families and, and within that mile and a half radius. And just to follow up, I'm gonna. I'm not gonna share this data, but we, we have gone back to some of the districts trying to get some additional information about cost in what they charge students. And I think Mr. Leighton brought up a, talking about. You know, did, did the transportation to all students impact or reduce drop off and pickup of parents? So we're, we're trying to retrieve that information. We've got about half the districts that, that have gotten back to us. We're really trying to, you know, obviously we're gonna get this information if we have to. You know, if, if if we have to drive to these districts, we'll get the information, but I don't have it complete and we'll tie it all together to help the school committee make it an informed decision. Uh, just seeing what other districts do. So. That's, that's the update. Uh, we, we, we're getting pretty close to the end of, you know, we providing some. Did some of these updates in really formalizing a, a report out to the committee uh, for you to make a decision. You know, that, that's not gonna affect how we prepare the bid. Yeah, because it's, it's only in a couple of spots, whether it's, it's, you know, whether we're gonna increase a bus or not increase a bus. So, you know, it, it's not this, I'll be building that, that invitation for bid. A- as the committee starts deliberating, considering modifying that policy. So I, I'd like to go back to that transportation survey. You saw some of the information. You saw the number of families that are involved. If any feedback to the administration on, on that survey is greatly appreciated at this time.
Okay, are there any comments about the survey? Uh, Mr. Leighton?
It wasn't on the survey, but just in more of a general cons, um, comment. So I think obviously big picture, it'd be great to give more opportunities for students to be able to take the bus, not walk, safety reasons and just. I think it'd be great to have more opportunities for kids. I just, I'm definitely cautious of the potential increase in budget that we have to be obviously cautious of that and whether the fees are able to cover that. And then that got me thinking about fees and I, I know we're gonna be financially smart about it and that we're gonna be good with that and make sure it balances the budget. But I was thinking, okay, if we're gonna be adding fees now. We had this concern earlier. It was last year, the year before about sports fees and potentially having a free or reduced uh, sports fee, kind of like screen reduced lunches. So I thought that might be a good idea to look into whether there's a potentially free or reduced bus fees. So that might be worth looking into. That way it's economically feasible for low-income families to be able to still take the bus.
Thank you for that comment. We are collecting that information from the districts that we're surveying. So you, the committee will have some of that information for your consideration.
Great. Thank you.
Um, that was a really good thought. I hadn't thought of that. Um, but what I, in looking at the data, I was surprised. I don't know why I was, but I was really surprised that it was a hundred and forty-two families with a hundred and eighty-eight kids. I would have thought there would have been less families and more kids. And of course, then I started thinking, well, my kids wouldn't have both fallen into one school at one time. So I suppose that makes sense. But a family rate versus a, um, single rider rate. You know, it makes sense to me too. And I know you're probably collecting that information as well. But if you had four kids, that's a lot trickier. So, so that's what I was thinking.
Looking at the data today and coming up with that a hundred and forty-two families.
Right.
Number. Uh, there were a number of families that had four children.
Yeah, so.
So it, yeah, so it's there, there are multiple, there are families with multiple children within a mile and a half of, of the schools. So.
Yeah. So that's something I would wanna keep an eye on as well. But now I think the survey is, is well, well-made, but at some point you won't know how much of a fee is too much of a fee. So would we have to survey again to see? You know, if you said it had to be a hundred and fifty dollars a kid or something, how will you know if that's too much before we make a commitment?
The we'll likely have to estimate the, the, the initial cost of the additional bus to the district and, and estimate the number of families that would be a rider and just kind of spread it with, within those families. So. So the, you know, as far as surveying, it, it's, it's gonna be the, it's really gonna come down to the cost that shows up in the, uh, the bid and allocating it. Yeah.
Cause you may have some families backed out if it's too expensive. That would be my concern. Once we've said, okay, we're gonna go ahead and do this. You know?
The idea, I mean, we, we never, in these cases, we, the district never try. It's not a money-making thing. It's just covering the, the expense. I mean, that's, that's been a longstanding practice. Uh, in this district and. Yeah, the, you know, the, the, we'll, we'll have to, um, you know, some of the costs in the other districts that I'm seeing are, you know, from. You know, I think I, I may even given this out before to, from a hundred and eighty dollars per year to a cap of six hundred dollars per family per year. So, you know, a hundred and eighty is that, you know, that's a dollar a day. Uh, one district is doing. So it's, and, and another district is doing two twenty-five per student, four fifty and then a cap of six hundred. So there, there's even a range to that as well. So. It, it'll be reasonable enough. I mean, obviously we want that, if we're adding a bus, we want them to participate. We don't wanna, but we don't wanna price us out of, of, uh, an additional bus that we may need. So. I mean, we're hoping to get some of the costs. And maybe an additional survey is a possibility. But I, I'd be, I'd be willing to bet that most families wanna pay the lowest price in that survey, whatever we put out.
Sure. This is true.
So. I'll work, maybe we'll work on the questioning on, on that. But, um. Yeah, i- i- obviously if, if it's the will of the committee to, to transport everybody, we wanna make it affordable uh, as possible if, if, if we have to charge people.
Sure.
So.
I thank you very much for all the work that's gone into investigating all of this. There's a lot to it. There's always more to everything than meets the eye.
Yeah. We're most at the end. So, um, you know, just, you know, all this information will be collected in some sort of report for you to review. I know I've been, it really, it, it has been my intent to kind of piecemeal it to you. Instead of just you getting a report next month with all the information and then having to look at. Hopefully the committee is, is getting some feedback from parents in the community about, about this possibility. And I think the school committee at least has some information that the, the, the informa- the administration has generated that you can pros and cons to, so hopefully we're giving you some information that you can share with parents that may not have an opportunity to participate at, at these meetings.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, there's no action, correct, on this?
Correct.
You're ready to roll. Okay. Um, so now it is time for public comment. Public comment at this time is open to any topic that falls under the scope of authority of the school committee. Are there any comments? Is there any comments from the committee, Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna speak out to the, the public, people on their computers, Facebook, on TV. If you made it this far, you're kind of interested in the school committee. Might be a good idea to fill out a talent bank. If you're not interested in, in the school committee, which is surprising because you made it this far, but there's obviously other uh, areas that the town needs, there's other vacancies too. Check out the town website, fill out a talent bank. Uh, it is rewarding to, to serve the community and give back and I encourage you to do so. And also have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right. Is, are there any comments from the public? I am seeing none. We'll check. Nope. All righty then. Uh, then we go on to committee reports. So we start with Mr. Leighton and the Athletic Advisory Committee.
Yes, we met on Monday. Uh, we did have two fundraisers got approved. Uh, one was the basketball fundraiser. Uh, they are doing a a stenciling art painting on like driveways if people want those, similar to what the soccer did. Um, it was actually a great meeting because we had conversations about how basketball, soccer had done it before. Soccer got in the conversation. Uh, it went very smoothly and it was approved, but I think those are the kind of conversations we wanna have that people aren't bumping into each other on fundraisers. So it went really well, uh, in that regards and they're even sharing stencils. So that'll be great. They're, they're hoping even the school might be able to even do some painting or stenciling too. So I recommend they reach out to the athletic director and the principals and maybe they could do. the athletic director and the principals and maybe they could do some spirit throughout Lunenburg, uh, and just try to get that team spirit going throughout the, the town. And then the, the football, the, sorry, the ice hockey fundraiser um, was related to their alumni game. So every year they do an alumni game to raise funds. Um, they're doing a booklet with ads in it and having the students, um, try to get ads into that booklet, some raise funds. So that was approved also. Um, also part of the conversation, we had, um, talked about the snack shack. And it came up that it might be a good idea too, that for us to also get a snack shack update. Uh, maybe it's from Nadine or John, but that's probably what I'm going to be incorporating in my, uh, topics for future discussion. So getting an update on that, uh, because I think it's been frustrating for the boosters to, to see other boosters in other towns doing certain things and and our snack shack not having those availabilities. And really kind of, where does it stand? Where is it? Where is the potential in the future and what's needed to, to get it to where it needs to be?
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Uh, next would be the finance committee. The finance committee met on the fourth of November. And their discussion really just focused on the articles for special town meetings, specifically those having to do with the TCP building. They had a presentation by Mr. Jeffries on the building. So, um, I'm not going to go into further because they last met last night at town meeting. Um, I'm going to let the, uh, person on the committee take care of that. So, um, we'll move on. So the PTO. And that would be, um, Ms. Shapiro, she's not here, school councils, the primary school.
Yes, so the primary school met on the eighth. Um, there were some grade level reports. Uh, one of the biggest things was Spirit Week. We also talked about certain expenditures for approval. Uh, they needed a, the primary school needs a new laminator. So it's about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, so that was approved. And then they need to also replace, uh, projectors. Like nine of them. It's kind of like the next round of projectors that they need. And then we also talked about homework policy. Really the focus should be on twenty minutes of reading every night. Was the, the big focus.
Okay, thank you very much. And the elementary school.
At Turkey Hill is meeting tomorrow.
All right. And, um, I would be representing the middle school and I have not heard about a meeting time, but I've told them to give me uh, the information when it comes in. And the high school would be Ms. Shapiro. She's not here. So we'll move on to capital planning.
Yes, so capital planning, we did not meet last week. We had, um, two members absent, so it was decided that it made more sense to put those topics to the next meeting. So our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, November twenty-third, where we will be reviewing capital requests from the police chief and the public records retention project that was on the last agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, wellness advisory, that would be Ms. Shapiro, right? And Paccel?
Paccel is also meeting tomorrow.
Busy. And the TCP Passios, um, building committee?
Yes, so we had met last week, um, for our forum. We didn't have too many people show up. Uh, and then last night at the town meeting, uh, the presentation took place. And then, um, a good amount of discussion um, based off of that new price. I think most people felt like it was, it was a good idea to pass over. It was recommended by the select board as well and we passed over those articles. So now at this point, uh, for the articles for doing the renovation or the new build. Um, so at this point, the TC Passios, I think we're somewhat in limo with what to do next. I think the concern would be if we were even to redesign the building to be, say, smaller, that you would need an architect to redesign that and get a new number for you. So it is going to be interesting where the select board go with this. And I, I think the committee is always willing to put in more work. We said to Mr. Jeffries that, yeah, we're willing to continue on, on this committee, but we're not sure what the direction is at this point.
Sure. And thank you for all that time that you put into the committee. Because it, it was very valuable. Listening, the reports were very well done. And you really understood what happened that led you down that path. And sort of like to the path of no return. There was no way to back down. So, um, to make it smaller, that was not in your charge, in the charge of the committee. So they did a really good job and the presentation was excellent. And I'll be very curious to see how they relook at it and what the new form might be. Thank you. Um, so now we are at topics for future discussion. We have the snack shack. And we need to come back at the bylaws because I need to figure out what that was about and look at it again. Also to revisit the goals.
I would also say again, continue to, to think about Turkey Hill when we want to put that on the agenda of making a decision on how we want to move forward with Turkey Hill. Doesn't feel like this is even frustrating with the TCP that it didn't give us more direction on what we can do with Turkey Hill.
Yeah, a- and there was a lot of conversation at town meeting, assuming there was going to be a building project beginning in two thousand thirty-one. But we have no, you know, we, we do need to talk about where it fits in and figure out what to do with that. I would agree. Anything else? Well then, before we take a motion to adjourn, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And we will see everybody December first at the town hall. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight seventeen PM.
I will second that motion.
All right.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night now.